September 4th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, which is generally the first and the third Tuesdays of the month, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address us on an issue related to city business. If you're interested in speaking to us at that period of time and you want to be sure that you get to speak, please call the City Manager's Office by noon of the meeting date, 949-8412, with your name, your phone number, and the issue you would like to discuss. If time is still available after scheduled speakers are through, we open up the floor to anybody that would like to come up and speak, any Eden Prairie resident that would like to come up and speak. If you have any questions on this, again, please contact the City Manager's Office at 949-8412, and these portions of the meeting are not recorded nor are they televised. We'll start out today with the HRA meeting. I would like to call the HRA meeting to order. Roll call. Councilmember Aho?
Aye, here.
Councilmember Case?
Aye, here. Sorry. I'll follow you. Whatever. I'm here too.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Chair, Terri Lukens? Here. The first item of business before us is to approve the minutes of the HRA meeting that was held on January 16th of 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
I would move to approve the HRA minutes from January 16, 2018.
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is, we are asked to adopt a resolution to approve proposed 2019 property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept proposed 2019 budget of $200,000. Mr. Getchell, do you want to say anything more on that?
Maybe just to add, as I've probably done the last six or seven years, that you're setting a preliminary budget and levy that needs to be done for both the city and the HRA. The city action will come during the city meeting. This is the HRA action. Prior to September 30th, and then the final levy and budget will be approved after public hearing by the end of the year, and we're asking that you approve the budget and the levy of $200,000, which has been consistent now for close to a decade, and these dollars are tied to the staff, staff allocation of time spent on housing and redevelopment.
Thank you. Was there a motion in a second already?
No.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed 2019 property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept the proposed 2019 budget of $200,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're back into our regular council meeting, and the first thing we have tonight is a proclamation regarding direct support professionals. It is Direct Support Professionals Recognition Week, and Eden Prairie is home to a number of residences and businesses that employ direct support professionals called DSPs. The DSP workforce is well over 3.6 million workers in the United States, and they provide a broad range of individualized essential support, all while building close, respectful, and trusted relationships with individuals with disabilities. So I'd like to read this proclamation, and I understand we have a gentleman here tonight from Hammer Residences? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was a man.
That's right.
It is Terri Ann. Thank you. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay. If you want to stand here and I'll read the proclamation, and then do you have a few words you want to say?
That's right.
Okay. Whereas, "Direct support professionals are the primary providers of publicly funded long-term support services for millions of individuals with disabilities; and whereas, direct support professionals must build close, respectful, and trusted relationships with individuals with disabilities because they assist them with their most intimate needs; and whereas, direct support professionals provide essential support that helps individuals with disabilities stay connected to family, friends, and the community while living life to its fullest; and whereas, direct support professionals provide a broad range of individualized supports, including meal preparation, medication assistance, bathing, dressing, mobility, and other daily tasks; and whereas, an adequate workforce of high-quality direct support professionals is necessary for the state to meet obligations to people with disabilities and minimize more costly settings such as hospitalization or institutional care; and whereas, direct support professionals is one of the fastest-growing positions in America in terms of demand, and yet low wages and demographic trends are creating a growing shortage of direct support professionals, leading to burnout and increased turnover; and whereas, public officials have a key role to play in building awareness around advocating for and addressing the issues facing this publicly-funded workforce. Now therefore, be it resolved to honor and support the important work of direct support professionals in our community, the week of September 9th through 15th, 2018, in the city of Eden Prairie. It will be designated as Direct Support Professional Recognition Week, adopted by the City Council on this date. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you, Ms. Thomas, from Hammer Services.
Yes, thank you so much. You have no idea how much this means to me and all of Hammer and DSPs throughout the state as well. You pretty much said everything that I'd like to say on behalf of DSPs, but I'd like to say what I prepared here, just to reiterate. DSPs, they are there for celebrations, disappointments, struggles, challenges, birthdays, and the day-to-day routine that can sometimes get old and tired. Often, they're there to operate hoyer lifts, manage a seizure, soothe and comfort after a tough breakup with a boyfriend or a girlfriend, or inject a dose of insulin. Eventually, they are there to support an individual through illness and often his or her death, saying goodbye to someone they cared for with expertise and the gentle loyalty of a friend. They sound like family, don't they? But they are professionals. They're professionals called direct support professionals, and they are paid approximately $12 an hour, while a living wage an hour in Hennepin County is approximately $24 an hour for one adult and one child. Their hourly wage is determined by how much money each individual served is allotted through Medicaid or medical assistance. Mayor Tyra Lukens, members of the council, on behalf of Hammer Residences and the men and women who serve the individuals that live at Hammer Residences, thank you so much for honoring these professionals and recognizing their tremendous, tremendous work and professionalism and training. We are incredibly thankful.
Well, thank you for all that you do, and thank you to the direct service professionals that are here or listening. We greatly appreciate it. I think anybody who has a family member that is making use of direct service provided by people like you is, we're all well aware of how valuable your services. A lot of times, we can't do it ourselves, and you can do it, and it is amazing to me that the wages are so low for a job that is entrusted with the people that we love. You're taking care of the people that we love.
Yeah.
So we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, each and every one of you.
Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to add?
Just one brief council member report.
Okay. Thank you, all in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting, or pardon me, from the council workshop held on Tuesday, August 21st?
Move approval?
Second.
Any items to correct in those minutes? Hearing none? Is there a motion? I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held the same date?
Move approval?
Second.
Any items to correct there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of items A through E?
I would move approval and just comment that I think it's just a cool expression. We're purchasing a 2019 Ford Utility Interceptor Squad Car. That, that sounds cool, doesn't it? It just does.
Yes, it does.
So I, yeah, I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're also declaring all office furniture obsolete, apparently. That's the item number E.
That doesn't sound so cool.
I'm sure it's specific items.
It is specific items.
Okay, all in favor?
Interceptor compared to obsolete doesn't even come close.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Public hearing, we have a public hearing tonight. A couple of them. The first one is Alliance Tap Site Improvements. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall, back in 2014, you approved a plan unit development concept plan for improvements to the Lions Tap site, so much of what you're seeing tonight should be familiar to you. It's much more detailed and honed in now that we know more about the Flying Cloud Drive project, and the applicant knows the details of their plans. But however, this project is, has a number of improvements. Site improvements to the Lions Tap property, which is located at the intersection of Flying Cloud Drive and Spring Road, and the applicant is proposing to plat the undeveloped land north of the restaurant as an outlot as part of this project. And then, as you may recall, due to the reconstruction, as I just mentioned, of Flying Cloud and Spring Road, there's an alignment of Spring Road to the east, and they're proposing to expand and improve their parking lot and add two small vestibules to their building. And as I mentioned, there's quite a bit of detail in the plans, and there are some waivers being requested, but I do know that the applicant is here to provide a presentation and an overview of their site improvements, so I won't get into those, those details. I'll let the applicant do that in regards to the parking and the landscaping and some of the upgrades that are coming. The Planning Commission, as you can see in the packet, did have some comment about screening, and that was included in the plans as well. Ultimately, they did unanimously recommend approval of the project to the City Council as well at their August meeting. So, Mayor, if it can work, we'd like to have the applicant provide a presentation, and then the staff and the applicant can answer any questions that the council or the public may have.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm John Shartlow with StanTech Consulting. This is a little bit of deja vu. We were here in 2014. The Flying Cloud Road project was delayed for a year, as you might recall, and we have gone through numerous site plan iterations as a result of changes and the location of the lift station and so forth. I will keep my comments very brief this evening. If I could have the PowerPoint, I would like to just start by saying where we started from with this project. When the notarments who are here with me tonight, Burton Bonney Noterman and also Jack Perry, who's a member of our team, when they were notified that the Flying Cloud Road improvements were going to happen, it was clear to them that their direct curb cut onto Flying Cloud would be taken and that they would lose those eight or nine parking spaces that were there. It's already a restaurant that is very strapped for parking. As you can see, the parking, it's on the other side of the road. So rather than trying to go through a contested condemnation case and get a big award, we suggested to Hennepin County that maybe there was a win-win in having the county deed the notarments, the property, that would be the surplus right-of-way adjacent to the real line Spring Road in exchange for the notarments not contesting the loss of their curb cuts. So that's the essence of what this has been about all along. And as the city manager said, we weren't able in 2014 to do the final approval of the site plan because the, the design of the Spring Road was still in flux, so we couldn't come up with a highly detailed legal description. So, should probably turn this on if I expect it to work, that's only reasonable. So again, the owners are here, Burton Bonney Noterman, who've owned the property since the 70s. There are a number of things that are being asked for, but really, when you boil it right down, it comes down to the fact that we are squaring off the property as a result of the site plan improvements. We have reviewed the staff report, and we agree with the staff report. We've worked with the staff very closely to work out the details. I'll touch on those just very briefly. I just want to say publicly how grateful we have been to City Engineer Rod Rue and the planning staff for their cooperation throughout this process in Hennepin County. It has been, it's a constrained site, it's a difficult site, and we're trying to work with a lot of details. We have gone through numerous site plan iterations, but it's been a very collegial process going The parking lot screening has been a challenge for us because the site is so tight and because of the drainage and utility easements. Again, I'll show you that in detail, but that's really the essence of it. The notarments, in making the very substantial improvement and investment, reinvestment in the property, wanted to add a vestibule in the front, the front entrance and the side entrance. The front entrance gets really tight because it's an existing site, and the building is there, and of course, the Hennepin County right-of-way is extending, so it's actually coming closer to. So we've had to work with the detail of that vestibule. We've now got it worked out to both the city's staff's satisfaction and ours. We also worked through the details of the trash receptacle and went through numerous iterations of the landscape plan. So this is a kind of a difficult plan to see, but if you look at that light green area, that's essentially the surplus right-of-way, and that agreement has been entered into between Hennepin County and the, and the landowners. That's, that's essentially a done deal pending this transaction. But in the report that was prepared by the staff for the Planning Commission, they did a really nice job of sort of illustrating what the previous site dimensions were on the top and what they will be in, with this approval, and likewise, how the comprehensive guide plan has changed. So really, there's a lot of detailed information about specific parcels, but what it really comes down to, we're squaring off the parcel and trying to make it as normal a shape as we can through this process. Again, not to get into details, but this was an opportunity not only for the Lions Tap to gain parking, but also to improve service access and to provide additional handicap accessibility and otherwise improve the eastern side. And so a good deal of the work that we did on the site planning was trying to make sure that we had adequate turning radii for emergency vehicles and service delivery. So you can see the arrows there on the east side, and likewise, the circulation through the rest of the development. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission level about changing to angled parking and going with one-way circulation. We did look at that. It would gain us a few parking spaces, but given the fact that there's only one way in and out of this parking lot, and given the fact that a lot of the patrons of this restaurant drive large vehicles, we just felt it was better to go with, with the parking spaces as we did. One of the challenges with the site is because it's so constrained, there's no opportunity to do ponding on the site, and so what you see in that lower right-hand corner is essentially an underground collection and infiltration system. It can be a very expensive site improvement, but all of the water that drains on the site, and even some of the water that drains across the site, will now be collected and treated before it discharges. That was another challenge because, of course, we can't plant trees directly on top of that. So that was one of the issues that we worked through in the last iteration. So screening of the parking lot was one of the main issues that was talked about at the Planning Commission level. On the exhibit that's on the left, it's the parking lot that's to the west of the restaurant. And there, we, we had the opportunity, we had the option of doing a screen wall, some kind of a fence, but we're worried about snow storage and snow clearing and thinking that essentially that would get torn up pretty quickly. And so we talked to Hennepin County about whether or not they would be willing to allow us to plant on Hennepin County right-of-way, and they were willing to allow us to do that. I think that's a win-win. It provides for a more natural edge. Obviously, if there's, for some reason in the future that had to be removed, then the applicants would still be responsible for meeting that screening requirement somehow. But we planted some, they're planting prairie grass there, notwithstanding the testimony of the person who was here before me. We think that prairie grass is going to look okay, and also, we're going to have a double row there of Sumac that will have a nice, nice fall color and a good look. On the lower right-hand side, that's the area where it gets really tied up against the drainage and utility easements, but we provided some, some low brown cover plants on one of the islands. Again, that's right on top of that drainage facility, and also planted some additional shrubs and grasses on the other side. So we've worked with the staff on that, and we feel we have a solution that works. One thing I want to just bring up very quickly and happy to answer any questions. One of the questions that the staff posed to us was whether or not there had been any kind of a Phase 1 or Phase 2 done where the previous gas pumps had been located. There was way back in the day, a gas pump right in the front of the building. I think it's really been like the 1950s since it's been eliminated, but we did, at the staff's request, do a Phase 2. There were borings taken, and they've been shared with the state. Mr. Noterman got a call from the PCA today saying that they don't think any additional work is needed there, that there hasn't been any migration of that material that's there, and it's been so long that they think that it doesn't warrant any additional mitigation. So that's, that's good news for everybody, I think. So we thank you for your consideration of our requests. It's been a long haul. It's been a very expensive process for the notarments. They're making a major recommitment to the community, but happy to do so. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shartlow or staff? Councilmember Case?
Yeah, just, just one quick question. I mean, we all understand why parking lot screening is so important, but this seems like one of those cases where it's, it's a rule, but it doesn't necessarily, it's not driven by any practical requirements. What are we screening from? There's, there's no potential residential building on the west, south, or east ever. So are we screening just because it's a parking lot and you have to screen, or is there some state with the highway there, some state rule, or?
Your Honor, Councilmember Case, generally, we try to screen the headlights from reflecting off-site, whether it's a driveway, or whether it's a street, or whether it's another property that might be developed in the future. So we're mostly concerned with the headlights that are, you know, maybe projecting out of the space.
I get that completely. I'm just trying to figure out what they're projecting into because there never will ever be residential development, nor any kind of development on the west, south, or east sides.
Maybe it's traffic that's up and down.
Yeah, that, I was, that's my question, yeah, whether we were looking to, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Shartlow or staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this development of Lions Tap?
Seeing none?
Yes, wait, there is somebody. If you will come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Joel Uyghur. I'm at 10131 Eden Prairie Road. It's the property immediately north of, well, two of the properties that are being discussed here, and that is the reason I'm here. I, I've got absolutely no qualms or issues with the proposed parking lot and what they're proposing with respect to the Lions Tap property. My question is, though, that there are several things, and I thought I heard the city manager mention it, that are at issue here, what the council's being asked to vote on or approve, and it's the resolution for preliminary plat is what I guess my concern is. I haven't heard no information or received no information as to what that entails, and it strikes me as perhaps a precursor to potential development of the outlot, but I haven't seen any reasons for me to approve, or, or I shouldn't say approve, object or consent as to what that involves. Excuse me, I've seen and heard complaints about the property being constrained and rather tight, yet I see that there is certain pieces of the property that are being proposed to be rezoned. I've heard no discussion or seen nothing in the papers as to why something needs to be rezoned here. I, I was not in attendance at the Planning Commission, but I happened to see the meeting online today. There was no discussion there whatsoever about rezoning. So my curiosity strikes me, I guess, as a neighboring landowner, really what is the purpose behind the rezoning request? What has been presented to the city council in terms of the necessity of the zoning request? And more specifically, what's been presented with regard to the necessity of replating this property and how that is going to be replanted?
Okay.
That concerns me from a neighboring landowner's perspective, as a person who researched the zoning laws before I purchased my property, understanding what can and cannot be done with the neighboring property. So I have somewhat of a concern if it's that easy to simply get property rezoned without what appears to me to have been any discussion on that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor or Mr. Getchell?
Your Honor, a lot of the reasons for the changes in the comprehensive plan and zoning is because the alignment of the roadway wound up a little bit different than what was anticipated when we did the original comp plan and zoning. So there's minor adjustments between what's commercial and what's rural to match now the, kind of the new roadway, but there's actually, my recollection is that there's quite a bit of more going into rural than changing from rural to commercial. So it looks like there was kind of excess commercially zoned land in the past, and now there's less needed, but it has shifted a little bit. And I have kind of complicated maps that were in the Planning Commission report showing that, which I could put on the overhead if anyone is interested in looking at that. But the, the net result was actually less commercial properties, so even our regional organization, Matt Council, said they don't need to look at this because the net effect is more rural zoning than before. I hope, you know, if that doesn't help you, we can certainly go over, over the maps to one-on-one. I'd be happy to do that with you.
And then could you also talk about the preliminary plat from two lots into one lot?
Right. So the, that is to, again, address some of the remnant parcels, but also to put that, that future development into an outlot that cannot be developed without going through a process so that you would see any proposal and there would be notices to the area before any development could, could take place to the north of this property.
So it sounds like this is actually offering more protection for a neighbor than what is currently on site.
Yes, that is. That is the intent, is to make sure that the outlot protects it and the rural comp plan and zoning designation protects it from development unless they go through a process to request a change and notifications and public hearings are held.
Okay.
So could I just add, is the proposal then, the new lot or the two lots would be what I'm seeing as a, I think they referred to being, squaring up the property is going to be one, and that outlot is everything that surrounds it?
Correct.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Nelson, did you?
No, no, I was just going to ask the questions that you did, but you did a great job.
Okay. Anybody else that wants to address the council on this?
Seeing none, then? I would move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the guide plan from neighborhood commercial to rural on .22 acres and to neighborhood commercial on .18 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for plan unit development district review with waivers on 2.2 acres, and a zoning district change from rural to highway commercial on .25 acres, from right-of-way to highway commercial on .51 acres, and approve the first reading of a zoning district change from highway commercial to rural on .18 acres, from right-of-way to rural on .03 acres, and preliminary plat from two lots into one lot and one outlot on 11.69 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council... incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, if any.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much for reinvesting in your business. The burger eaters of Eden Prairie are very happy. The next item we have is a code amendment, Chapter 11, Transit Oriented Development for the town center area. Ms. Jeremiah, I assume?
I could introduce it, Mayor, and Ms. Jeremiah might be able to answer questions. The, you know, as you know, the town center district regulations were created in 2007, and then the Transit Oriented Development District regulations were adopted much more recently in 2016. So, when the two districts were put side-by-side and then analyzed, there are some housekeeping items and some changes when you look at both districts with the nine-year difference in creation, where we brought forth some amendments to bring consistency and clarification between the two districts together. So that is the update to the code. If you read through the packet, you could see all the details as it relates to TOD zoning and town center zoning, and as you know, with, you know, future possible transit-oriented development or just redevelopment in general in the town center and around TOD areas, we want to be able to have zoning regulations in place that deal with streetscapes and plazas and public guard along with proper setbacks for that type of development. So a lot of that work has been done, as I said, in 2007 and 2016, but we just wanted to have consistency between the two zoning districts.
Okay. So more regulations for pedestrian and off-street bike facilities is part of that, too, which I think is great. Okay. Any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend City Code Section 11.26 and 11.27 to address the TOD and TC zoning district.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is payment of claims, which is actually the release of the council's permission to pay the bills that we have. So, is a roll call, or a motion, please?
Move approval of payment of claims is submitted.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Locant?
Aye.
Report of city councilmember Ron Case.
Yeah, just a real brief comment here and maybe a question, but on my wanderings through the city over the last couple of weeks, I was on Waterford Road, and a couple neighbors actually talked about the speeding that occurs going down Waterford from the east to the west. I think I'm doing that right. And what could we do about that? They asked about speed bumps. Robert, relax. I went through the whole, speed bumps have been requested for, Robert's like, "No, not speed bumps." This request had come in 10, 15 times over our 20-some years on the council, and that through all of our investigations and staff, that they really don't work. People speed up before and after, you know, and it's just not a workable solution. But in chatting with what might be solutions, I thought, "Well, this is a good example to bring back to staff and just say, 'Well, what are the alternatives when we get this?' Because you get them, I'm sure, and we get them periodically throughout a year. This road has a speeding issue or a problem. We root it back through the police and they do a concerted kind of an effort for a couple weeks, and that's great. We have the new solar-powered digital readouts that I understand work until they become part of the scenery, but they work for a while. And I just wondered two things. One is just to let people know Waterford Road came up, so if that can be channeled appropriately somewhere. And then, second, maybe Robert just speak briefly, what are some alternatives? What can we tell people when we get these complaints of a road that has speeding issues? Do we have any more tools in our toolbox, or is it, did I just go through them?
Councilmember Case, so yeah, this is a frequent request that we receive. Speeding in neighborhoods is kind of common. A lot of things that we tell people that we do is, of course, directed enforcement. If we can have police officers go out there, if there's certain times of the day that they're seeing more speeders, is it related to school pickup drop-off, is it, you know, the AM/PM rush hour? So try to get that kind of information so that we can be more focused on any enforcement we would do out there. We also have that mobile speed display unit, so we can set that out there. And again, that helps remind people that, hey, it's a neighborhood and, you know, you forget, you drive what you feel comfortable driving, but when you see a 35 or a 40 blinking, it reminds you that maybe that's not the speed you should be driving. So, we think that helps with the education. When, we also do the more permanent speed display units, where we actually post on the ground the solar, and they are effective. I think I catch myself every once in a while in some of the streets around town where we have those, that they, you know, they do work.
Others catch you. I think that's the bigger issue.
And then, the other thing that we often tell people is, you know, in a neighborhood like this, leave a bicycle, child's bicycle or ball laying out in the front yard, because that just helps remind motorists, hey, there could be kids, you know, and it's just one of those things, I know me individually, if I see that and I'm driving through a neighborhood, I kind of look around and I'm a little bit more aware that I need to be cautious of my speed. So, what we give people advice like that is make it look like it's a neighborhood, and that does influence some driver's behavior. We also find that a lot of the speeders live on the street where the speeding is occurring. More often than not, it's the people that live on, in the neighborhood that are causing the problem. But those are some of the things that we do and talk about with homeowners, and if those things don't work, then maybe more aggressive treatments where, you know, we haven't done much of this, but looking at neighborhood reconstruction, where you put in traffic circles or other types of traffic calming measures. We haven't really taken it to that level, but it is an option in the right circumstance.
How many mobile digital readout units do we have?
For mobile, I think we have, I think the police department has one unit.
Is that the one that sits up on Anderson Lakes Parkway, coming in from Bloomington, going west? There's one up there.
It's been there.
Or is that a permanent one?
That one's permanent, yeah. I think we might have three or four permanent and...
Okay, one mobile?
Yep, and one mobile.
And if they work, I mean, do you feel like we're getting a little bit more of an increase in these complaints, or is this not a problem that's worthy of a solution? Or are we solutionizing where there's no problem?
You know, I don't know the statistics out on Waterford. That's not a call that I've received. It sounds like maybe in the past this has been one that's been called in. You know, I look at a street like that, it's probably got very low volumes. The people that drive the street are probably the people that live on the street. I don't know that a permanent speed display would be warranted here. We usually reserve those for like the Homard Hills.
In the mobile kind of, but, yeah.
I think that would be a good use here, is, you know, just if that could get on the rotation every so often, then it goes out there and people are reminded that, hey, you know, the police department is aware of this, they're sending a mobile display unit out there. Just that driver feedback, I think, does help alter some behaviors.
Probably might be a little bit more than just the neighborhood. That might be interesting to look into, too, because it has the potential to be a cut-through from the south side of Preserve Boulevard to avoid the light at Anderson Lakes, and you can cut through and go down to Homard Hills and over. And again, I don't know if that's worth monitoring or just checking, not that they, I mean, people can drive, that's certainly okay to drive it, just if there's a speeding issue that gets complicated by that cut-through. Well, thank you. I just wanted to raise it. It sounds like we'll look into that, and I'd like to use that, I guess, more when, your answer when I'm around and people talk about speeding on their roads. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item that we have is a report from the city manager regarding the proposed property tax levy and the proposed budget for 2019. These are items that were asked to approve a proposed increase in those or a proposed budget, but the final vote takes place in December. Mr. Getchow?
That's correct, Mayor, similar to the HRA.
We can't make it any higher. We can only go lower.
That's correct. So you would, you're basically setting your ceiling tonight, and you're also setting a hearing for December, for the first council meeting in December. That's the action that's being asked tonight. Maybe as a little bit of background, and there'll be a detailed presentation in December, as we typically do, but as a little bit of background, our city prepares a two-year budget, and, but however, we need to certify our levy and our budget annually. So it was in 2017 that we began preparing both a 2018 and a 2019 budget. So as you know, through the workshop meetings that we've had, I've discussed this being the second year of a two-year budget. And when you get a better feel, maybe, for some of your costs, obviously, a huge percentage of a city government's costs are wages and benefits, when you have a more detailed feel later on about where your insurance cost may be and wages and benefits and maybe your utilities, you might make adjustments here and there, which we've done. But you may recall that the proposal for the 2019 budget is pretty close to exactly what was proposed initially, and that is a budget that is a 2.9% increase in a tax levy that is a 2.7% increase from the prior year, so very modest increase. I'm going to talk a little bit about an update I have on some tax impact information, which we've only learned of in the last two or three weeks, which is very positive. But overall, you can see there's a document within the packet that anyone can go to. It's about 30 pages long. That breaks down our general fund, our enterprise funds, talks about our capital levy, there's $100,000 proposed increase to our capital levy, and that follows our, the plan that we've had for the last three or four years, but that's included in that 2.7% levy, so that's built in there. But, you know, we've made some investments in our parks, in our capital plan, we're looking at a yard waste drop-off site. So we have a lot of different elements in our capital improvement plan, which is also scheduled to be adopted by the end of the year, but includes our debt levy, which is very low and very flat, our general fund levy, our capital levy, that all goes into the action tonight. And then notices, after you approve setting the preliminary levy and budget, notices will go out to each and every taxpayer in Eden Prairie on their particular property, and it will state, based on your action tonight, what their proposed taxes will be. And obviously, the city's only a portion, a quarter, of your tax bill. You have the county and the school and other taxing districts. But if you happen to live in the median-valued home in our city, your home for 2019 will be worth $386,000 roughly, and that's an increase from $369,000. So just under a 4% increase in your value, and that's going to equate to a less than 2% increase or a 20, roughly $20 annual increase in your taxes. If your value is flat or it goes up less than 4%, your taxes actually may go down because our city tax rate is actually, our overall city tax rate is proposed to go down. Our city tax rate is roughly 32.5%, and it's proposed to go under 32%. So it's also a very positive development. We'll know more about these detailed numbers toward the end of the year, but this is all an update for the city council since our July workshop. But a very modest, minimal increase in taxes with the proposed budget and levy for next year, and a budget, again, that follows the city council's direction of continuing a delivery of a high level of services at a very reasonable price. And again, you could lower this budget or levy by the end of the year, but you cannot raise it. And the last, I'd probably say, seven to eight years, we've done, we've tried to do a very good job of giving you a budget and a levy in September that you could count on at the end of the year and not needing to make any adjustments between now and the end of the year, and that's our recommendation as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Getchow?
Just going to make a comment.
Sure.
A little bit of patting ourselves on the back, I guess, but for the most part, the five of us have been on this city council for the last 10 years. Cherry was on a lot before that and was off those two years, but for the most part, the five of us share the last 10-year record, and the tax levy on average has gone up 2.9% a year for the last five years, but if you average it out over 10 years, it's gone up 1.8%. That's an amazing record that the five of us share, and so, not only that, but during that time, we won more awards, especially if you count Money Magazine. This is your legacy, Mayor, by the way. I know you're, well, it is, it's our council's legacy, but, yes, but we won more awards during that time, and our average resident approval rating continued to climb. And if you count the, what the people that rated us good to excellent or something, it's, what was it, 86% or 97%?
95.
Yeah, it's amazing. So, I mean, I think we've done well. We've kept taxes low, kept quality of life high, and benefited our residents tremendously on both ends of that. In order for someone to want to buy our home someday and move into the city, taxes obviously could drive people out or keep people from coming in, but so can quality of life. We've been able to do both, so, good job, all of us.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, is our motion.
Move to adopt the resolution that certifies the proposed 2019 property tax levy to be $38,278,724, and sets December 4, 2018, as the meeting, which will include discussion of the budget and provide a public comment, and accepts the proposed 2019 budget of $50,54,720, and consents and approves the HRA tax levy of $200,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Is there anything else to bring up for the council? Is our motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Hey, keep in mind, too, here's another thing you heard about when he was talking about the speeding, you know, on that one street. If you guys...